I would like to call to order the council meeting of October 16th.
Councilmember, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson's here. Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Eight members present at quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
And I'll first turn to Mr. Swope.
Thank you. People could keep in their mind Ted Lawson, who was both an officer of the County Democratic Party as well as a former city election worker and was a member of the Board of County Canvassers who was tragically killed last week.
Okay, are there anyone else that people would like us to remember at this time? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, if we could please rise. Thank you.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, is one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of October 2nd.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move the minutes as written of the October 2nd meeting.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a tribute in support of the United Auto Workers members impacted by the strike against General Motors and urging General Motors to resolve the strike.
If we could have those that are representing General Motors at this time, please come forward. Come into the well. Vice President Garza.
Thank you. So this hits, uh, this hits home with me, you guys. I was raised in a UAW home. My grandfather was a master craftsman at Fisher Body. My dad was a 35-year member of UAW here in Lansing. And so when I say I stand in solidarity with you guys, I really do, and I have your back 100%. So with that, I'm gonna read our resolution for the City of Lansing. Whereas Lansing has a long history with General Motors forming partnerships to benefit the Lansing economy and the many workers involved within the plants as well as the businesses that benefits off of the needs of GM and their employees. And whereas on Friday, September 15, 2023, at 12:00 a.m., the United Auto Workers went out on strike because they were unable to reach an agreement with the Big Three. Whereas the Auto Workers are calling on the Big Three automakers to recognize that the contributions and sacrifices that the UAW members have made to create a healthy and profitable company. And whereas UAW membership is striking to secure increased wages, cost of living adjustment, no change in their health care, retirement security, added Juneteenth holiday, two weeks parental leave, up to a five work vacation time, five work, five-week vacation time, a just transition to the EV battery work. Whereas the Lansing City Council, City of Lansing understands the economic impact this strike has on not only our city but the region as well as the many individuals that are impacted by it. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lansing City Council supports the workers employed by and/or affected by the strike and urges the Big Three to resolve the strike as soon as possible by honoring the dignity of those who have helped make the Big Three prosperous over the years. Be it further resolved that the Lansing City Council encourages our fellow elected officials to stand in solidarity with the working families in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, and with that, Vice President Garza, you are moving the resolution.
So with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, this is a roll call vote.
On the resolution, President Wood.
I stand with the UAW.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
That's right, I'm right here, yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, proudly.
Councilmember Jackson.
Power to the people.
Councilmember Cost.
As a UAW member, yes.
Councilmember Spatafor. And Councilmember Spitzley.
As a proud daughter of a Teamster Union steward from the American Red Cross, a proud union mother from Michigan Bell, a proud sister of the postal union, as a proud mother of the firefighters' union, I will stand, so, yes.
Eight yays, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Wirt. I'm president of UAW Local 602. Dwight Jackson, president of Local 1753, stands before us as well. We're here. Both of these locals are out. Local 652 is with us. 2256 is in the, is in the crowd. We have a variety of locals up here as well. This is a union town. We've been doing this a long time in Lansing. We're proudly build some of the best vehicles in the world, and we're ready to get back at it as soon as General Motors wants to get their head out of their tail. The fact is, is our men and women, our brothers and sisters, do it every day on the line, and a handful of millionaires sit at a table and argue that we make too much money. It's absurd. The irony is, is in 2020, they all said we were essential workers, and here we are out on the street. Okay, we appreciate everybody here who is, who is supporting us unanimous like that. That's fantastic. Thank you. And Dwight, if you've got anything?
No. I just thank everybody for the support, and we're gonna stand strong.
And next, we have Blue Cross, Blue Shield, UAW workers, if they would come forward.
You're doing great.
It's 100 degrees down there.
Got the change of guard.
I can't take this off.
Hello? Good to see you again. Nice to meet you, Michelle Jeremy Garza. All right, looks like we have them all down here. Okay. So, whereas Blue Cross and Blue Shield was formed in 1982 from the merger of its two namesake organizations, where Blue Cross was founded in 1929 and Blue Shield emerged in 1939, whereas on Wednesday, September 13, 2023, over 1,400 UAW Blue Cross, Blue Shield workers went on strike across Michigan. And whereas Blue Cross, Blue Shield customer commitment is to be clear and simple to help customers make the right choices, offer valuable coverage, and to help get qualified, quality health care. And whereas Blue Cross, Blue Shield employees are striking to secure, secure retirement health care, abolish multi-tiered pay structure, cease outsourcing and contracting out job classifications. Whereas the City of Lansing understands the economic impact the strike has on our city and the region, more important is standing alongside our union brothers and sisters to ensure fair wages, benefits, and working conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lansing City Council supports the workers employed by Blue Cross, Blue Shield or affected by the strike and urges Blue Cross, Blue Shield to resolve this strike as soon as possible. With that, I would move the resolution.
Roll call vote.
On the resolution, President Wood.
I stand with the UAW.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Again, proudly, yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Eight yays, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Again, thank you for everybody for the support. It's pretty overwhelming to see the community standing behind us. One thing I would point out is if you look behind here at all these people, these are all families that work in the area, put money back into our economy. When a nonprofit organization continues to outsource, build call centers overseas in the Philippines, Guatemala, and that, that is taking money directly out of this economy, is Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Michigan. Everybody that carries their product lives in this state. For a nonprofit organization to outsource in the name of savings, when I don't think any of us have seen our health care costs go down in the last 20 years, their savings translates to higher pay for their executives. You know, that's something everybody needs to keep in mind here as we're dealing with these nonprofits and trying to keep the, the money in the, into this local economy where the people that own their product live. Thank you, everybody.
We want to thank all the workers that came down that have left the picket line this evening to be down here, and all of us that are connected with other organizations, whether it's East Lansing, whether it's Delta, whether, you know, whatever other municipality out there, we need to urge them to stand with UAW as well. So please make sure that you're giving that message so that they can see that this is a united region, not just a united city.
Okay, we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Councilmember comments. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I just want to invite everybody to our Fourth Ward Constituent Contact Meeting every fourth Saturday of the month. This Saturday, October 28, at Gregory's at 10:00. I am on call at work, but Councilman Cost has agreed to step in my place. So if anybody wants to come and talk city business, Councilman Cost will be there at 10:00. And it's every fourth Saturday for the Fourth Ward at Gregory's, 2510 North Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Is there, Councilmember Spatafor?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a personal privilege real quick. Last Friday night, Sexton Football Senior Night took place, and due to a logistical issue, one of their players was not recognized, and I'd like to rectify that error on, at council this evening. So I'd like to recognize Van Norman. Van's a member of the National Honor Society. There you go, thank you. He's an honor roll student and was one of only six students chosen by Eric Thomas to represent Sexton High School for a once-in-a-lifetime trip to Dubai. He's a three-sport athlete, including basketball, track and field, and four years on Sexton's varsity football team. He wears number 55 in honor of his older brother, who was also 55, for Sexton Varsity Football. He wants to give special thanks to Eric Thomas, as well as teachers, Mr. Moulton, Mr. West, and Mr. Kelly, who've been trusted mentors throughout his school career. And one of the greatest influences in his life is his mother, Kelly. He plans for the immediate future to attend college, where he'll continue his football career. Maybe he can try MSU, see if he can work some magic there, no comment. He has received a number of offers, including both academic and athletic scholarships. He's weighing his options with several schools where he will pursue dual degrees in business and construction management in preparation for a career in real estate development. So Van, if you're out there watching City TV, congratulations.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yep, so just a couple of quick comments. First, I want to thank folks that came out to our constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. Again, well attended. South Lansing residents always blow me away. It was cold, it was rainy, it was early, and we still had 25, 30 people show up. You know, wanting to engage, wanting to learn. And I think the, I think that's most, at least for me, encouraging is, you know, folks asking, you know, what can I do? What can we do to assist on this front, that front, this part of town, et cetera, to move the dial, and I certainly appreciate that. Particular thanks to Chris Klein and Aurelius Christian from the Lansing EDC. They were out there to discuss a number of economic development activities in southwest Lansing specifically, and there's, there's a lot of work being done. So we are close, I would say, goal line, a lot of projects throughout southwest Lansing. It's gonna take a heavy lift essentially to get that, that ball over the goal line, but it was encouraging to hear that we are very close on a number of those. Some neighborhood meetings in southwest Lansing this week. Churchill Downs will be meeting tomorrow at 6:30 p.m. at 5825 Wise Road, so that's in the Sandy Allen Room at the Alfreda Smith South Side Community Center. The Colonial Village Neighborhood, who has, they have not met, I think, since maybe May, they'll be having their first meeting of the fall at 7:00 p.m. That's at Grace United Methodist at 1900 Boston Boulevard. And then the Luton Rich Neighborhood Association will be having their monthly meeting at 7:00 p.m., and that's at Mayflower Congregational Church at 2901 West Mile Hope. I also wanted to thank, since we have everybody still here, personally, I wanted to thank the UAW. I think one of the things, you know, both entities, I think, one of the things that often gets lost is, you know, the work that you all do actually sets the standard for every American worker in the country. It's, you know, it's... And I personally want to thank you for that. So whether we're talking unionized, not unionized, whether we're talking public, whether we're talking private, you know, whether it's, you know, wages, fringe benefits, total compensation, working conditions, you all continue to set the standard, and we are very, very grateful for that and indebted to you all. So thank you for the work that you're doing. We appreciate it, and we do stand behind you. Lastly, I wanted to bring to attention, and we do have some folks in the audience that I think are gonna speak to this, I wanted to bring this to the attention of law. We have an egregious issue on West Miller right now. There is a particular residence that has about eight, nine dogs on site. This has been an issue for months and months and months. I personally have been on site. Folks are, they can't sleep, they can't go out to, you know, use their backyards, the dogs are aggressive. We've had Ingham County Health Department out, they enforce different things than we enforce, obviously. We do have a ordinance on the books that says you cannot have more than three dogs that are older than six months living at your residence. However, they not only have eight to nine dogs out in the back, and these are very small lots, these homes are very close to one another, and the fence, even the integrity of the fence is being compromised at this point because the dogs are constantly pushing up on the fence. But in any event, we have sent out zoning letters, we have had premise officers on site, the list goes on and on. My understanding is we had a meeting today on Zoom with Judge Flores, the resident, potentially the residence attorney, and we have now given them another 30 days. The situation is so bad, and again, I've been on site many times, so bad that folks, again, are not sleeping, there's zero peace in their own home. And, and so I wanted to preface what I believe are gonna be some comments at the podium, because it truly is an unlivable situation, and I don't think anybody that was in on that meeting today that agreed to another 30 days would be okay if this was next to their home. So I'm hoping that we can maybe expedite that, maybe revisit that, and bring some peace to these people over at West Miller.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. And we touched on this earlier today in committee of the whole, but in the spirit of, first of all, I do stand with all of you, and I am totally support you, but in the spirit of supporting our, our unions, I'm gonna just briefly read the post that was four days ago from the Lansing Professional Firefighters and Local 421. And it says, "Your Lansing Professional Firefighters would like to thank the Lansing Fire Department Administration for making the difficult decision of shutting down Truck 41 due to lack of staffing. 421 understands that this was only for a short period of four hours, but this was a very difficult decision. The decision allows our members to immediately begin firefighting operations upon arrival at a structure fire and maintain the requirement of having two firefighters inside the structure and two outside to come to their immediate aid. Unfortunately, that left the north end of Lansing with no ladder truck and no ladder taller than 24 feet. The citizens and visitors of Lansing and our members and our administration have been placed in this unfortunate situation in large part due to the inability, inability to hire at a rate to keep up with demand. 421 looks forward to working with fire administration and the appropriate city departments to quickly address this issue so we can return to safety, so we can return to safely and appropriately keeping you safe. And we heard from our HR director earlier today that they are in the process of bringing 24 recruits in through the firefighter academy, and I think that's great. But for me, you know, as a mom, and it hits close to home, you know, it, it underscores that every day, you know, our, our safety workers, our public safety workers, our firefighters, our police officers are putting their lives on the line every day. And I think it takes an incredible amount of courage for them to basically say, you know, we can't do this, and that we don't have the staffing. And we were told that it was because of testing and some other things and some scheduling, and I get that. But, you know, we, as a council, as an administration, as we're making budgetary decisions upcoming, we have to keep all of that in mind, that, you know, our residents and the safety of our residents is paramount. And we, we've had some tough lessons these past few days about that. And, you know, nobody won in that situation. We had a tragic death, and now we have a 15-year-old whose life is just, it's, it's gone. And so, you know, where do we look at, and I think it is a situation where the system failed this young man. They did, we did. And, and it resulted in him thinking that it was okay to take somebody's life. And, and, you know, how did we get here? How did we get here? And we've gotta do better. We've gotta do better for our children. You know, we're raising children who are desperate and don't see any other way. And it gets back to, you know, in my mind, making sure they have opportunities, making sure there are skilled trades, making sure that there are opportunities in school for kids who don't want to go to college, you know, because, you know, if you don't go to college, then you don't have nothing. We didn't used to have that. Back in the day, when I was in high school during the horse and buggy days, we had, you know, we had, we had skilled trades. At Harry Hill High School, they built homes, and we don't do that anymore. And so we've left a whole population of young kids without options. And when you don't have an option, and when you're desperate, bad things happen. And so a good man died, and a night, a young man's life has just been changed forever. We have got to do better. Thank you.
Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. I just want to echo, you know, the loss of Ted Lawson was a major tragedy for the city, and it was, you know, heart-wrenching to hear that news come through. So I am thinking of his family. You know, this is a very difficult time for them. And I also want to thank the union members who came out tonight. I have been on council for 10 months, and it took union members to fill this for the very first time and all the time I've been here. So as someone that is UAW 6000, I am so extremely proud to see so much red in the audience tonight. So again, I want to reiterate, I stand with all of you until the bitter end.
Thank you. Other, other councilmember comments? Mr. City Clerk.
Thank you. I do want to make some notes about our upcoming election. So many of you know, the election is three weeks from tomorrow, and we do have two at-large city council positions, as well as the first and third ward, and a question about shall there be a general revision of the city charter. You can get a list of the candidates and additional information about the proposal at lansingvotes.gov. And there are three ways to vote. You can vote at home. There's still time for you to request an absentee ballot that we can mail to your house. And you can, again, for all of these ways to vote, you can go to lansingvotes.gov. So vote at home. New this year, for the first time ever in Michigan, vote early. So we will start having early voting, and that's the true early voting, where you vote just like in the precinct, but before Election Day. We will have that Saturday, October 28th from, from 1:00 to 4:00. And that, that opportunity actually overlaps with our Souls to the Polls Trunk or Treat event at 2500 South Washington. And then we will take Sunday off, and we will be open the following Monday, October 30th, through Sunday, November 5th. For more specific hours, again, go to lansingvotes.gov. And then, of course, you can vote on Election Day. Polls are open 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. You do need to go to your own polling place for that, and you can look that up, once again, at lansingvotes.gov. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you a minute to tell us the details of it.
Hi. The mic's not on. So my event is Coalition We're Forming, called the Place for Us Coalition. And the purpose of the coalition is to create safe housing options for the unhoused LGBT religious minorities and families with teen children who currently aren't really supported by the shelters in the city. The meeting will take place on October 24th, next Tuesday, at 7:00 p.m., and it will be at The Fledge, which is at 1300 Eureka. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
The 11th Annual Race to Restore 5K Runway is inside Mount Hope Cemetery this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. You can register online at runsignup.com or in person that morning at 9:00 a.m. by cash or check payment. And we hope we'll see a lot of people out there supporting us. It's our major fundraiser for the year and enables us to do our restoration projects in the cemetery, our events, and run the cemetery courtesy office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. The Village Lansing will be holding our fifth annual trunk-or-treat event on October 31st, Halloween night, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's gonna be at the Village Lansing's Resource Center located at 3525 South MLK in the parking lot. We are still looking for trunk hosts, so if anybody's interested in decorating their trunk and handing out candy, it's a wonderful event. It gets bigger every year. We are also holding a candy drive. So if you are interested in donating candy, you can drop it off anytime between 1:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. each Sunday or any other weekday. Just message us and set up an appointment. Any organizations, groups, or workplaces that would like to do a candy drive, we will collect candy donations all the way up until October 30th, the Monday before. We will also have DJ Busy for the third year in a row, the resident trunk-or-treat DJ. It's gonna be a lot of fun. And then we will also have volunteers from the city clerk's office in the house for the second year in a row. Again, it was a big hit last year, so we will have a youth voting event with real tabulator and a, and a real ballot. So bring the kids out, October 31st, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. If you're interested in supporting, you can message us on Facebook, The Village Lansing, or you can email us at thevillagelancing@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So this Wednesday, around like 6:00 and 9:00 or something like that, give or take, to Everett cross-country runners and those who are friends and family of current cross-country runners, there's going to be a pasta dinner at 1939 Oneida in Okemos. Of course, it's gonna be pasta dinner, and any one, any friend or family of the, of, of someone who's on the team is, is allowed to bring whatever food they can bring, even ones that they make themselves, especially a certain type of salad.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other community events, we are to registration for public comment on legislative matters. So if you want to speak on any of the items 4 through 22 on the agenda...
So if you want to speak on any of the items 4 through 22 on the agenda, you have a few more seconds to sign up with Evelyn in the back on a blue sheet. And anyone who has signed up will have the opportunity to speak. So I'll give you about another 30 seconds to sign up if you haven't had the opportunity already. And by the way, item 16 has been polled, but it is still eligible for people to comment on.
And item six.
Item six?
Yeah.
The tribute?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
And before I turn it over to Mayor Shore, I just wanted to remind people that on October 24th at 6:30, the Rejuvenating South Lansing Meeting will be held at the Alfreda Smith Center in the Sandy Allen Room. And again, that's at 6:30. For anyone that would like to come out that's focusing on items on the south end, but it's open to anyone who would like to be there. So with that, Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Madam President. There's been just a ton going on in our city, so I'm proud to relay a variety of congratulations to a variety of folks. I want to congratulate our Bhutan community, who had a wonderful celebration over the weekend, a celebration against evil. The SMAC individuals, which I have to look up and see what that means, but it's a group of folks that are through, they're doing great work. They have a TV show and an organization, and they're raising money to help out businesses and folks in Lansing, so thank you to them. Bethel Church had its 50th anniversary, so congratulations to them. We had some incredible events over at the Lansing Center in the area. Roller Derby returned to the Lansing Center, so it was a lot of fun, as well as the Beer Festival at the stadium, which had a lot of folks there, so it's great to see a vibrant downtown. Congratulations to Uplift Our Youth, who had a wonderful dinner, and congratulations to Pastor Craig, who was installed as the new pastor at Union Missionary Baptist Church. Our Latino community had an incredible business expo, where they highlighted just wonderful business folks from our Latino community. The NAACP had a great Freedom Fund Dinner, and I'm happy to report that the Red Cedar Hotels are now open, one extended stay and one regular. The only announcement, I have two. One, the mobile food pantry will be Saturday, August 21st, starting at 9:00 a.m. at Tabernacle of David, which is 2645 West Holmes Road. And yard waste will go back to being weekly, or at least continual pickup, starting next week. We expect high volume, as there's a lot of yard waste coming down, so our folks will do their best to get it all, but they're planning to go weekly instead of the bi-weekly, so folks can put it out, hopefully with the understanding that if there's a high volume, they could be falling a little bit behind, and then we'll have maps and things online. So that will start next week. And that's what I've got. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We are to public comment on legislative matters, and our first speaker tonight is Jody Washington, followed by Nick Zandi.
Jody Washington, I'm going to start by saying I am a union member of the Michigan Association of Government Employees, OPEIU Local 2002. In my family, we are now in our fifth generation of union workers. My great-grandfather was with the Railroad Union. My grandmother was one of the first female stewards with the UAW. My mother was a UAW Teamster member. I have been a union member by choice my entire career. I was with the UAW as a state clerical, SEIU as a nursing assistant, MAJOR, Michigan Association, and OPEIU 2002 as a professional state worker. Both of my children are members of the MEA, so we are a proud, solid, union family, and we have heard the stories of the sacrifices throughout the years that unions have taken. I think there is barely an entity in this country that has done more for the American people than the unions. They are the one, if not for unions, we would not have safe working conditions, we would not have reasonable working hours, good wages, fair working conditions, breaks, sick leave, vacation leave, medical insurance, pensions, or a middle class. We stand on the shoulders of giants that were willing to sacrifice and fight for what we have today, and some of them even lost their lives in the fight. Today, it is easy for us to forget how far we have come and forget how important solidarity is, not just for the UAW, but every union person that belongs to a union needs to stand in solidarity. Today, I thank our union brothers and sisters that are on strike for their bravery and for the sacrifice for demanding justice in the workplace. While the GM can pay millionaires millions of dollars to the executives, they say they cannot afford to pay the line workers a higher wage, offer pensions, or stop the tier system. What unions fight for eventually creates the bar for all of us. It is not easy for anyone, as the trickle-down effects occur, but it is worth the efforts. So again, I thank those of you that are on strike and those of you that are being affected. We have watched in the last several years the shrinking of the middle class. We have watched our benefits being stripped away slowly while the corporate wealthy get more and more and more. The class disparity deepens daily, and it may, and it will affect, it will go even further if we do not turn this around in very short order. So thank you, council, for these resolutions. Please continue the fight for labor while you sit at this dais. And again, I stand in solidarity with all union members. Thank you.
Audience, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but at this part of the meeting, we do not do applause. We want to make everyone feel comfortable coming down to the dais that might have differing opinions. So if you want to stand after somebody who's made a comment, that's fine, but otherwise, please, no applause or anything else at this time.
Okay, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Trini Lopez-Palavaglu.
Thank you. So like Ms. Washington, I am here to stand in solidarity with the UAW and Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and unions in general. I think that unions are important to ensure workers' rights, fair wages, as well as fair workdays and work weeks, and to make sure that the work weeks not only stay short, but also shorten further than they already are. To say this, I will give you a few quotes from two of my, a few of my favorite political figures in history. They are 16th President Abraham Lincoln and longtime presidential candidate William Jennings Bryan. In the words of Abraham Lincoln, "Labor is the equal to and even superior to labor." He, and while Republicans today probably wouldn't think of that as a, wouldn't want people like them in the party, Republicans of them certainly echoed those sentiments. People like Horace Greeley and one of his members, the guy from Pennsylvania, I forgot who it was. But to say this, I'm sure while Lincoln may have had some quotes that made him of his time, words like this still seem relevant now considering what the strikes that are going on. And one of my, another one of my favorite quotes was from a man you probably know again, William Jennings Bryan. To quote him, "You shall not crucify mankind on a cross of gold." And while I'm definitely far from a Christian, he absolutely, those words were meant to show support for labor, as well as breaking away from the gold standard that was holding our currency back at the time, something that eventually Franklin Delano Roosevelt would sever ties with. And since then, we didn't have to be held down by a bunch of gold or even silver. And to say this, I echo their sentiments today and say that "You shall not hold down labor through a crown of thorns, nor shall you crucify humankind on a cross of gold."
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Trini Lopez-Palavaglu, followed by Tamara Carter.
Hi, good evening. My name is Trini Lopez-Palavaglu. I am here tonight to speak in favor and in support of the two tributes or resolutions which council has put forward, supporting UAW members striking Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Michigan, as well as General Motors. My husband is a UAW member of Local 602, and he is currently on strike. As of today, Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Michigan employees have been on strike for 34 days, advocating for secured retiree healthcare and unto multi-tiered pay structure and to cease outsourcing of jobs. Auto workers across the country have been on strike for 32 days in an effort to increase wages, maintain healthcare coverage, to reinstate a cost-of-living adjustment, and more. To know that Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Michigan employees are expected to help many of us navigate healthcare insurance every day, and yet their company does not contribute toward their retiree healthcare is outrageous. That it will take an average of 22 years for them to reach top pay in their current roles as they exist is ridiculous. In addition, auto workers made sacrifices in 2008 and 2009 so that the Big Three could survive. It turns out that both Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Michigan and the automakers are thriving. By keeping pay stagnant and not investing in their employees, these companies are ultimately affecting our local economies. When families like mine can't afford to buy a new car off the assembly line that my husband works on, that he actually assembles, that's a problem. When retirees can't afford to seek medical assistance after years of service and backbreaking work, that is a problem. Meanwhile, CEOs across the board are making tens of millions of dollars each year. I'd like to thank all union members for your service and your dedication in standing up for what's right. I would also like to add that as a city, we should make every effort to support our own union-represented workforce and do what we can to invest in our greatest asset, which is our people. I thank council for your public support of union families like my own. We must show solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tamara Carter, and then Luna Brown.
I am Tamara Carter, Southeast resident of Lansing. I won't be before you long, because I'm not going to get emotional, but I would be remiss if I did not speak in favor and support of the UAW workers. My grandparents were dedicated union workers for over 50 years. My grandmother was the first African-American steward in Meskegon, Michigan, and so, being that I was primarily raised by my grandparents and it trickled over into my family, I felt strongly led to speak today in support of our union auto workers and making sure that these companies of General Motors and the Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Michigan find some type of resolution, and I urge them to find resolution, to give those employees what's fair and what's due to their employees. CEOs should not be making 20 to 30 million a year, as union workers are asked to make concessions and sacrifices for years while these companies continue to make record-breaking profits. So wages, healthcare, pensions, and retirees, retirement needs to be given to those who have earned those benefits. I also come to you in just making sure that everyone knows, and want to go on record, that everyone knows how important our union workers are. Our middle class, being a steward of a union family and also being middle-class myself, I strongly urge that these two companies resolve and settle this strike. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you for the union workers that have filled this room. Thank you for the council who have passed this resolution. I stand in full solidarity to our union workers, and I thank my grandparents for paving the way for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker for this section is Luna Brown.
First, I'd like to stand in solidarity with all the union workers here today. As a member of the industrial workers of the world, I'd like to remind all workers, whether you're part of a union or not, that we have to stand in solidarity together as the working class for all, the rights of all workers. Second, even though it's been struck from the agenda, I'd like to comment on item 6, the recognition of Bishop Victor A. Trevino Sr. I brought this to the attention of some council members today, because it literally took just Googling his name to figure out that he protected his pedophile son with, when he had knowledge that his son, while serving as a youth pastor in his church, was molesting children. And I think it should be taken as a learning experience for the council, that you need to look into people before you just assign tribute to them because they served for some church or nonprofit organization in the city. People have skeletons in their closet, and it was literally the second result on Google when you search his name. It doesn't take much work to find out about people and find out whether the city should be recognizing and supporting these people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker, and we don't have any public hearings to refer. So we are to, we're going to move forward to the first two resolutions for action, item 17, the appointment of Ted Odell.
Councilmember Spitzley.
I was there.
Okay. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you so much. We had Ted Odell. Is he here?
Ted, if you would come on down and come into the wall, please. Thank you.
Do you need a minute?
Go ahead.
Okay. Very significant background in public service, as well as serving as city manager, just a lifetime of expertise. And so, with that, he came, interviewed, answered questions. It was a good time, and with that, I move the resolution forward.
And again, this resolution is to be appointed.
I'm sorry, yes. The at-large member of the Planning Commission term to expire June 30th, 2025. My apologies.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Planning Commission Member.
Of the Office of Planning Commission Member.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
And the next appointee, Councilmember Hussein. This is for the Board of Police Commissioners.
Sure. So we have an appointment of Andrea Bitley as the Fourth Ward Member of the Police Board of Commissioners, for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. We did have Ms. Bitley in front of the Public Safety Committee. Fantastic job. Andrea moved to Lansing in 2015. She currently resides in the Fourth Ward. Her first choice for appointment was the Police Commission, which we always like to see. She currently works as the Vice President, correct, of Marketing and Communications for the Michigan Realtors Association. One of the quotes that stuck out to us from her application, she said that, "I strongly believe in public safety and the need to protect residents from violence in our community. I believe in community policing and understand the need to have a connection between residents and law enforcement to stem the tide of violence in Lansing." This means high standards for law enforcement officers and an unwavering dedication to the integrity of the law and its enforcement. And so that really, you know, kind of stuck out to us. The spirit of the interview was, again, just fantastic, and we felt that this particular individual was highly qualified for this position. So with that being said, we would move the appointment of resolution, I'm sorry, the resolution of appointment.
All right. We have the motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously. And if you come up to the mic, we'll get you sworn in.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the Office of. Board of Police Commissioners Member. According to the best of my ability.
And with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to move the consent agenda, and those remaining on here would be the reappointment of Nikki Solden as Business Representative Member of the South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority, Board of Directors, for a term to expire July 30th, 2027. We have a reappointment of Samantha Troutman as an at-large member of the Historic District Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. A joint reappointment, Monica Janner, to the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board for a term to expire September 17th, 2026. A reappointment of Frank Lee as an at-large member of the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Reappointment for Versi Williams as the Third Ward Member of the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Setting a public hearing on brownfield plan number 84, that's 505 through 507 East Shihawassee Street Rehabilitation Project. We have a setting of a public hearing on the Special Assessment Principal Shopping District 2023 Rule. Act 4, 2022, remaining street dedication, remaining, is it renaming or remaining? Remaining street dedication and land transfer Red Cedar Development, and that would be all. That, I'd move the consent agenda.
We have the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously. That takes us.
We're to item 19, the show cause, and we have three show cause hearings, 19, 3, 21.
Number 12 first. That pulls over. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. So we have item 12 then, the reappointment of Deshaun Leek.
Vice President Garza. Now, we have a motion before us. Any questions, concerns? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed. Passes 7-1.
Okay, then we are to item 19, the show cause hearing.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, so both 19 and 20, I'll speak to them kind of collectively, move them respectively. We actually took both of these through the process early in the year. I believe that we approved both of these for 60-day make-safere-demolishes. Unfortunately, we learned that when this went through purchasing, because what we do is we contract for demo. So when this was arrived in purchasing, as they were going through their process, they realized that the legal descriptions were not correct. So we unfortunately have to take both of these back through the process. The legal descriptions have been remedied, corrected, and we did take this up with public safety. Mr. Walter Allen was in from code, let us know that nothing has changed with regard to either one of these properties. There's no reason to halt either one of these processes. And so with that, I'm going to first move a show cause hearing on orders to make safer demolish for the property at 1722 Denora Street, and that would be for October 30th at 7:00 PM.
All right, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor setting the public hearing say aye.
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
Okay, and then the second resolution to set a show cause hearing is for the property at 131 Jackson Street. And again, the show causing here would be Monday, October 30th at 7:00 PM, 10th floor of City Hall.
All right, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
Okay, and this is a new, this would be, if approved by this body, this would be a 30-day, this is a fire damaged property. The owners of this particular property at 619 West Mount Hope Avenue are Daniel J. and Evelyn DeHane. The SEV is $44,300. Estimated cost of repairs is $53,621. Again, the SIS fire damaged. We did have Walter Allen in from code to our public safety meeting. He did let us know that there was an interior tear-out permit that had been pulled in September. However, that had not been filed. No other permits have been pulled. Original red tag date on this particular property was August 26th of 2019. The Make-Safere-Demolish Board took a look at this, summer of 2023. Their orders were not complied with, so it was conveyed over to council. Again, the show cause hearing, as with the other two, would be Monday, October 30th at 7:00 PM. So with that, I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed, passes unanimously. And that takes us to Councilmember Spatafro.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move the resolution for the OS reentry full contract with the State of Michigan. What we have before us is a resolution approving the acceptance of a contract for a five-year grant totaling $4.04 million, $808,000 per year from the Michigan Department of Corrections to operate the offender success reentry program. Previously, we received $654,000 from the state, but our team negotiated a larger amount to fund tutoring programs for certain participants in the program, including GED costs serviced through Peckham. I know it was a question Councilmember Jackson had in committee this afternoon, and we were able to get that answer from the department. We have budgeted the original amount but not the increase, so just noting this is a supplemental appropriation for this year, but next year the full amount will be included as we look for that grant to come back next year.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the grant and the appropriation say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sign-in sheet. If you haven't already signed in and wish to speak, we'll give you about another half a minute to jump up and get with Evelyn to sign up. And in the meantime, we're to referral items.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I make a motion that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
We have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we have, from the City Clerk, Menace of Boards and Commissions.
Please don't file.
And from the mayor, we have two items relative to Act 4, 2023, the sale of parking lot number one at 425 South Grand.
Development and planning.
Two items relative to Z9, 2023 vacant parcel south of 1917 Oz Band rezoning.
Development and planning.
Grant acceptance, Eagle Recycling Infrastructure Grant for a new front-load recycling truck.
Ways and Means an Internal Auditor.
And a workers' compensation claim settlement.
Ways and Means an Internal Auditor.
We have orders, two items for related to orders to make safer demolish for 3301 Turner Street.
Public Safety Committee.
And we have about 25 traffic control orders.
You're not going to read them all?
I can if you want.
We'll just give them all the city operations and be done with it.
Communications and petitions. We have a communication from Elaine and David Wamboldt objecting to the settlement of the Logan Square lawsuit.
Please don't file.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Councilmember remarks. Do you have any council member remarks? Just want to remind the public as well as council members that again, on the 19th, which is Thursday, we have a joint committee of a whole and Board of Water and Light Commissioners meeting, and that will be at the Board of Water and Light, the Train Depot on South Washington, and that starts at 5:30. So please remember that we do have that. Okay.
Remarks by the mayor?
Mayor, sure.
Just one, and for the UAW folks that remain, I neglected to say that I also stand with the UAW. I appreciate council's pass of the resolution. It's been great to stand with the UAW outside the Blue Cross building and hit the horn every time I come by, which is a lot. So, you know, my horn's wearing out, my apologies. And to stand with both the UAW folks that are on strike and be out there, first in the warmth and then in the cold. But I also stand with UAW, so we'll make that unanimous, and I appreciate all you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. First, we have Robert Gray, followed by Luna Brown.
Good evening. My name is Bob Gray. And first of all, I'd like to ask.
Bob, can I have you move that microphone just a little bit closer to you?
Is it better?
Yep.
It is?
Yep, you're good now.
Thank you. I'd like to know who gave the authorization for the Lansing Board of Water and Light to take money out of my pocket and use it for donation. That's wrong. That's taking money away from somebody who does not authorize that. How about if everybody in this state and city just went ahead and started taking money out of people's paychecks for donations without their authority? I'm going to go just checking into some more of this because I think that's wrong. And the other thing is, Mr. Mayor, back when you raised my property taxes for building a building for police officers and firefighters, whom I understand today, we just got, going to get some new trainee firefighters, but we don't have any people to put in it. We don't have any police officers on the South Side. I've gone over this and over and over and over with emails with Mrs. Wood or Ms. Wood and the Second Ward.
Mr. Garza.
It's him, yeah. And it's like, yeah, they sent a police officer out to talk to me. Yeah, sure they did. And what happened? He says, what can we do to help? I says, how about patrolling this damn area? And they don't. They do not. We've had shootings over there. We have cars being stolen, and no, we don't have any police officers. So thank you very much for raising my taxes. And now I understand you want to start a disaster fund? When are you going to raise my taxes again, Mr. Mayor? Huh? How much more do you think we can afford? I don't get it. And I tell you what, I know there's people a whole lot worse off than I am, and I don't know what they're doing, and nobody seems to give a crap, period. It's ridiculous. And as far as our union workers, I would like to speak to that because I was a union worker, 30 years at GM, right here in Lansing. And what happened to our country? Back when Clinton was in office, he outsourced everything. He started the NAFTA thing. And what happened? We told him back then, you're going to die. That's what's going to happen to our country. And that's what happened. Then we have to compete with the Japanese, and we build junk because 90% of everything that's in those cars come from over there, not here. That's why we don't have any work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Luna Brown, followed by Julia Miller.
Hi, I'd like to speak again about the issue with transgender housing and shelters for transgender people in the Lansing area. There's currently no real good shelter for us in Lansing. I've been told that the city funds three shelters that supposedly don't discriminate, but they don't really show that in their actions. They don't often have private bathrooms for transgender people to use. They don't have private showers for transgender people to use. They don't have policies in place to respond to bigots in general. And every shelter needs to have policies in place to respond to people being bigots regardless of who they're being bigots towards. Racism, transphobia, homophobia, abelism, stuff like that should not be accepted within any shelter, and the staff should actually do something about it when they get complaints about it, which they currently don't, even in the shelters that claim they don't discriminate and get city funding. When people try and address this fact, they're just told off and told to go pray about it or whatever. And it's just nonsense. And this is becoming a real problem because people in the trans community and the LGBT community in general have much higher rates of homelessness due to employment and housing discrimination, and we don't have anywhere to go. And that's why I'm forming the coalition that I'm forming, because we need to do something about it. And the city should be working on this too, because we need options. Like, trans people are dying in the streets right now because we don't have anywhere safe to go. The shelters we have currently aren't even safe for cis het people, let alone transgender people. And we need policy changes within these places to make it safer for everyone, and we need policies specific for trans people. And we need people working in these shelters to actually be trained on how to talk to and deal with people who are trans and LGBT and not just like assume everything's okay because we don't have a policy specifically discriminating against you like City Rescue Mission does. So I guess that's it. Again, we need to do something. We can't just say that, well, they don't have policies against it, so they're fine. Like, we need action. We need change in this city. We need a place to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Julia Miller, followed by Mary Kay Lawrence.
Hi, I'm Julia Miller, resident of the East Side, kind of mimicking Luna here. So almost six years ago, I helped co-found the organization Punks with Lunch Lansing that primarily assists with feeding and providing supplies for people who are predominantly unhoused. It's been, that's six years. It's been more than six years that I've been asking for better shelters, more warming centers, more assistance, six long years. It's been three years ago that I emailed every council member who was on council at that time and asked for assistance with warming centers. One person, Patricia Spitzley, one of all the council members, was the only one of you that even responded. Some of you weren't council members at that time, so I'll give you some slack. But of all of the council members that I emailed, one person took the time to reach out. And that's ridiculous. I now work, operate, a drop-in where we provide supplies like harm reduction supplies, sack lunches, hygiene supplies to folks who are predominantly unhoused. I see at a minimum 15 people a day, 15 to 20 to 25 people a day every day. That's at least 100 people a week. Almost all of them are unhoused. When I talk to them about where they're staying, where they're at, the majority of the time, in my car, on the street, under a bridge. Why are you not staying at the shelter? Reasons why? It's not safe. People steal from me. Women are subjected to sex trafficking. They get bullied. They get picked on. They get beat up. They get assaulted. They can't leave their property alone for five minutes to use the bathroom because somebody's going to steal it. And if they do anything to try to, you know, defend themselves or keep their property or anything like that, they get told, they get kicked out. They get told to go to the corner and pray about it. Literally, I had a participant who is a member of the LGBT community who was getting bullied, harassed, picked on, assaulted by other people staying at the shelter there, and when they went to address it, they were literally told, handed a Bible and told, go to the corner and pray about it. If that's not discrimination, I don't know what is. So Lansing, do better. We're the capital city, and our capital city deserves better.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Kay Lawrence, followed by Nick Zandi. Next, we have Mary Kay Lawrence, followed by Nick Zandi.
Good evening, my name is Mary Kay Lawrence, and I'm here to talk about my neighbor. Adam Hussein has been very helpful in helping me trying to get the dog code under control. My neighbor does have eight to nine dogs, and they bark a lot. They are separated by cages, and there's three cages, so there's four, three to four dogs inside the house that come out periodically to use the backyard to go to the bathroom and stuff, and the other dogs are in the cages. They are in these cages twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Last year, they had a chihuahua outside, in Michigan weather, when it was negative, what, negative eight degrees. They had a chihuahua outside. It's very disturbing. I see their Alaskan Husky try to dig out from underneath his pen, and about three days later, he was in my backyard. I wanted to keep him. It's a very beautiful dog, but these dogs are not, they're taking care of very little. They get just enough amount of food so that they're not being starved, they get one thing of water, I pretty much see a day. They are in eight by eight cages, never get to run out, never. Only the dogs inside, which are three German Shepherds and a chihuahua, they get to come out and run around. The other two chihuahuas, the Alaskan Husky, another Alaskan Husky that they had, I don't know what happened to that one, and this really big dog right here, never ever get to run, never get to be outside of their cage. The big dog is transferred at night to the, what do you call that, the garage, and at night, because he barks so much. And the neighbor that lives across the street from me can hear the dog still barking in the garage. This is starting to be a real big issue because my mother also lives next door to these people, and this Alaskan Husky is now howling for hours, starting at 4:00 AM. I really wish these people would take better care of their dog. I don't care how many dogs that they want, they can have twenty, as long as they take care of their dog. But they don't, they don't take care of any of them, and they ask their eleven-year-old granddaughter to come and take care of a situation where there's a bunch of dogs fighting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Nick Zandi, followed by Trini Lopez-Palavaglu.
Does the timer ring? Okay. I first want to express the same sentiments as our first public speaker for the Yellow Sheet. I absolutely agree that what Bill Clinton did with the whole NAFTA thing was an absolute mistake, even as a fellow Democrat of Bill Clinton's. And, but I also think that a lot of the stuff, the free trade stuff, was also partially the blame of Ronald Reagan and George H.W. Bush, and I have very little kind things to say about them, even though I'm a distant cousin of one of them. In saying that also, I express sympathy to the last speaker when it comes to hearing about their neighbor's treatment of their dogs. As someone who received a dog bite and had to go to the emergency room to get stitches for one of my own neighbor's dogs, and it was clear they didn't treat that dog very well either, I think that responsible dog ownership needs to be taken very seriously. But what also needs to be addressed here, and this is very personal for me, it's about the murder of Ted Lawson while Ted Lawson was campaigning. He definitely did not deserve to die an early death, nobody does. In saying that, not only does this show just how poorly run our police department is and the fact that we're, that they're doing a terrible job at keeping our city safe from crime, but also, I think this needs to be addressed, and that is campaign security. I have said that campaign, I remember I was out in the, on the West Side, and I, and all the campaigning I did when I was in, on the West Side, was just me. Tried to get people to work for my campaign, but ultimately, it was just me. And so, knowing that people who are canvassing are mostly unprotected, shows that there's, that security of those who go out and canvass needs to be taken seriously, and I think that campaigns should be given an option to have access to proper security to prevent incidents like this from happening. And to this, I say condolences to you, Ted Lawson, and to his family.
Thank you. Next is Trini Lopez-Palavaglu, and then Daniel Arnold.
Hi, good evening, Trini Lopez-Palavaglu, and I am also here to speak on the topic of public safety. I'd like to thank council for acknowledging the passing of Ted Lawson. Last week, it was a tragic and brutal ending to his life, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this was the ninth homicide in the city this year. There are eight other grieving families in 2023, and many more community members affected by their loss. So I'm not one to sit around and feel hopeless and helpless when tragedy strikes, I like to dig in and see what we all can do to help. And so, I would implore city council at every opportunity that you have, anything that is presented or comes before you or crosses your path, if you could advocate for dollars to increase public safety measures throughout the city. The fact is, we do not have a full police force. We do have some dollars going toward violence interruption, we need more, we need more programming, we need more for our kids. There are some current opportunities that are available throughout the state of Michigan. The first one that comes to mind is the Community Violence Interruption Grant, which, if applied for by October 26th, will give any nonprofit, public center, public sector entity, private sector entity, or educational institution up to $1 million in order to reduce gun violence and take safety measures in those communities, $1 million per community. I would implore the city and/or any community organizations who work in that realm to apply for those grant dollars and bring additional safety measures right here to Lansing. There are also some smaller steps that community members can take in order to curb violence in our city, and one of those, it might seem like a small step, but it is a very important step, is to volunteer and spend time with youth in Lansing and mentor them. It doesn't have to take up a bulk of your time, it can be one to two hours per week, per month, or even a few days per year, but the fact is, when kids feel supported, it gives them a better foundation to grow on. You do not have to have kids in the Lansing School District in order to become a volunteer, you simply have to pass a background screening. You could become a coach for a Parks and Rec team, or any of our other community sports teams here in Lansing that support kids. Again, these can be small steps that we can do together in order to create a safer environment. There are long-term goals, but certainly, we can each do our part to play an important role in public safety here in Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daniel Arnold, and then Elaine Wamboldt.
Hello, this is Daniel Arnold, Facebook guy, smiley. I hear all around, all these people lobbying to help our homeless, from all different sectors, City Rescue Mission, A Police For Us, Nation Outside Wants To Help People Too, The Fledge is doing stuff, you know, Julia mentioned, Punks is lunch, and various nonprofits, just Cardboard Profits, Homeless Angels. And so, I just want us all to come together and just say, "Let's cover all the sectors." I go to the City Rescue Mission Shelter to eat very, very frequently, and it is, you know, yesterday it was just packed, and there was like no room, some of the people had to stand, and it's just, you know, we don't want to pull away from that, but we also want to accommodate what Luna's talking about, for a place for us, so we just need to all come together as a community, and I really appreciate what Trini just said about, you know, us going and finding opportunities to serve the people in need, whether they be children or homeless, or whatever situation people are in. Back in the day, historically, we had, there was this man named Mark Bozo who opened city outreach, and he just, he just serving pizza and Kool-Aid and chicken wings to everybody and just, you know, it didn't come out of government funding, but if it takes government funding for some of it, then let's all work together with, you know, just our nonprofit and whatever it takes to make sure that every single person has a place to go, and when they are under the bridge, then it's also important for people to go in and find those people under the bridge, or wherever they're at in the park or wherever, and say, "Hey, we're here to support you, you're a member of the city of Lansing, and we care about you." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Elaine Wamboldt, and then Norma Bauer.
President Wood and council members, good evening. My husband and I submitted a letter opposing the Logan Square settlement. The letter was dated October 2nd and was on the agenda in tonight's meeting under Communication and Petitions. I thank you for putting it as part of public records. The owners of Logan Square have had a history of serious problems over the years. The latest, a mass shooting in the early morning of July 30th in Logan Square that injured five kids. Mayor Shore was all over the media, talking about how he was going to stop gun violence. In August, the city attorney's office asked the Ingham County Circuit Court judge to place the aging shopping plaza under the control for a court-appointed receiver. Sounds like the citizens in the area are finally going to find a solution. After all, is it not what the mayor's responsibility is to protect, to serve, and be a guardian for our residents? Instead, the case never went into court to discuss the court-appointed receivership. We got the settlement made between the attorneys. Once again, our voices were never heard. And I, in my opinion, I believe it was a waste of time and a waste of my tax dollars. It is my understanding that they must meet with the police monthly to discuss, the owners, that is, the progress at Logan Square. I would like to recommend that President Wood, our Third Ward Councilman Hussein, and our Second Ward Ward Councilman Garza are all including, at, all included at these meetings. Furthermore, they must be able to make suggestions and comments in behalf of the South Lansing residents. They are all elected by the people to represent us, then they can come back to their constituents and tell us what's happening. Remember, we are taxpayers, and we live in this area, we have a right to be informed. I remember at one time, Mayor Shore was big on transparency. South Lansing residents and business owners must have a safe and protected environment. I thank you for listening to my plea for safety for South Lansing. I'd also like to present this to be part of the public record.
Thank you. Can you grab that, Mark, please?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Norma Bauer, followed by David Vashaw, I believe is his last name.
Hi, I'm Norma Bauer, and I want to thank you all for serving. As I look at you, it seems like you have a rather diverse council, and why I think you do so much good, because we know diversity adds value. So I think that there's four people of color and one who's openly non-binary, so I want to add my voice to Luna's. And since I sat through the committee of the whole and heard our city auditor, I think it was, explain about all the hiring practices and stuff, I want one of you, at least one of you, to ask her, "How come I don't see anything in the job descriptions that I've looked at say anything about accommodations for persons with disabilities?" Because there's people with disabilities who do wonderful, wonderful things, maybe some of you have a non-apparent disability and you just didn't come out and say it. Obviously, I have three, I'm a woman, I've got disabilities, and I'm old, so that's three strikes against me in this culture. So, okay. And, yeah, I'd like to see accommodations for people with disabilities in the job descriptions, and I'm not sure that they're there now. And the good news is that I've visited what Cardboard Profits is doing these days, they're running a retail store, which is the area-wide diaper bank, and they're doing wonderful things, not just all the stuff that they get and give away, but the way they collaborate with city schools, and area schools, and even provide adult diapers for kids with disabilities. And it's just a wonderful, wonderful place. They not only give away stuff, and they give away lots of stuff, they also give away love, and that's why everybody who volunteers there just loves it, and I hope to become one of them soon, offering help with finding a job for persons with disabilities, like, I don't have a car, and I don't have a degree, and I don't have anything more than a flip phone, and, you know, whatever their barriers to employment are, I want to help them as I've helped others. I've helped people with a criminal history, I've helped people transition to self-employment. And The Fledge does that, the nonprofits are getting it, you know? I mean, they're really pulling together. There's somebody at The Fledge who comes in to do early childhood education stuff, and so many other things, I can't even remember what they all are, and they're keeping a record of it on the Cardboard Profits Facebook page, so if you ever want to find out how good it is, come on over, they're only open two hours a day, Monday through Friday, and they are busy as heck, and they've just started to keep a record of all the stuff that they give away. But believe me, they give away hugs, and that's what people want. We just want to belong, and I'm glad to belong there, or something like that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I think it's David Vashaw, maybe? And then Stan Chuck?
Yeah, why don't you put one of the mics?
My name's David Vash. You hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now, sir.
My name's David Vash, I'm currently part of the homeless community. Not for very long, so I haven't seen the true horrors of all of it, but I've seen enough to know that there, I mean, there's so many places that claim they're doing for the homeless and helping them out, but all I see when I go to these places, the Outreach, for instance, Mark Bozo started the place with a wanderer's dream, but you go in there now, and the people that go in there, they're in a one foot by one foot square, all night to sleep sitting up. That was not Mark's dream. City Rescue Mission, Christian-founded, are the ones that bought into that, or bought it up, and took over running it. It went from a place where people who had been hurt, raped, beaten, or just trying to get sober. get sober. They felt safe there. Mark passed away, the city took over. There's no safety there. Now I lost two phones in two weeks because we're ordered to put them on a counter up by where, they're being watched by a camera. But when one got stolen, I went to Matt and I said, oh, what happens now? Well, I'll look on the camera and I'll find out who got it and get it back for you. That never happened. I said, well, what am I supposed to do now? You know who took it? And he said, yeah. Well, who did it? I can't tell you. Tell the police. Oh, so now I report this man. They didn't want to put it out for him. I don't know who he is, but he knows I reported him. That makes me feel real safe. Because you know, he's got a warrant, he's going to come shut my mouth. Perfect example today, I had to stay in the streets last night because I wouldn't go back to the outreach and I ended up going to hospital for a couple hours. I come back and I asked someone to go in, make sure that I could take a shower, I'd been diagnosed with pneumonia, and I could get cleaned up, warmed up. They said, no problem. I go in, there was only one bathroom in that place. I get my legs undressed, or the bandages and stuff undressed my legs, and the janitor of the place comes in and starts screaming at me, what are you doing taking so long? I said, I'm dressing my wounds and using the bathroom. Like, I thought I'd planned ahead. Come to find out, the person had not gotten clearance and not told him anything, so I was...
Thank you, sir.
You can finish your statement and then...
Anyway, I was made to stand there and be humiliated by the whole staff for cleaning my wounds and using the bathroom. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next we have Stan Shuck and then Nathaniel Ford.
I want to talk about a couple of things. First of all, Elizabeth throwing Dennis under the bus tonight, right dead under the wheels, saying that the UAW is pretty much on board with them not filling the vacancies. Those are dues-paying jobs. The Union Hall takes money to run, grievances take money, the whole process takes money. That comes from dues. Those are dues-paying positions. And I guarantee you, I was hoping Dennis was going to speak, the UAW is not on board with having vacant positions, especially when, you know, she almost choked when she was asked if she's ever been told not to fill positions. And, and she said, well, you know, I've been told to prioritize some. But I want to get into this recycling. Tonight on your agenda was item 28, approval of a grant. What was the grant for? A recycling truck. Something I pay a fee for, something everybody pays a fee for. You had Andy down here, he said that the fee pays for two new trucks every two years. Current truck's 21 years old. So where's the money? Well, I'll tell you where the money is. First thing we did in 1990, we got a grant and built a transfer station. Then to facilitate a local developer, we moved the central garage into that building. So we had to have someplace to put recyclables, so what did we do? We built a salt barn. It's the big hoop-dee building down there at South Street. It's a salt barn. It's what it was always intended to be. But they put the recycling in there, so they bought that building under the guise of the fee. Okay? So now they're getting ready to open up a new recycling drop-off center. Well, where's that going to be? It's going to be behind the current salt barn that is in such a state of disrepair that it has to be torn down prior to the recycled drop-off center being put in. Where's that money coming from for the demolition of that building? I'll guarantee you where it's coming from. It's coming from the fee in the name of recycling. So you're building the whole public service complex with the recycling fee money. It's taken a few years, but you're almost there. You're almost there. And you didn't hire any of the employees, once again, none of them, but you know, the recall process, I was a seasonal for 14 years. Takes a couple of weeks. Doesn't take six months. That's ridiculous. But where's the $325,000 that was supposed to go to one of the two new trucks you're going to get that now you're getting a grant for? Or does that mean we're getting three new trucks? I think we all know the answer to that. This is blatant fraud against every fee payer in this city, every single one. And it needs to be reevaluated. It's not a revenue stream for construction or rebuilding watts. It's a fee.
Thank you. Next is Nathaniel Ford followed by Kyle Chipman.
Thank you, city council, for listening, for having me speak tonight. I would like to invite all of you to our Lansing Anthiogens and Psychedelic Society meeting this Wednesday at 1300 Eureka Street. It's at The Fledge. Somebody was talking about The Fledge earlier and all of the great things that it does for the community of Lansing. We would like the city council to consider voting soon to adopt the same language that the city of Ann Arbor, the city of Detroit, Hazel Park, and Ferndale have adopted and decriminalized anthiogens and fungi. We feel that the city of Lansing should lead and set the example and the tone for the rest of the state, that a lot of the community could benefit from the therapeutic values that are therapeutic benefits that anthiogens and fungi can offer to some people. I have some flyers. We're going to be here tonight after the city council meeting, so if any of you would like to meet with some of the members of the society and talk to us about our meeting in person tonight, we would love to speak to you. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next we have Kyle Chipman and then Michael Mercer.
My name's Kyle Chipman. I'm also a member of LEAPs. I have multiple medical conditions in which at one time I was on 32 different medications. Half, or about a third of those were for side effects of the medication for the conditions that I had and through the use of cannabis and psilocybin. I now have not been to the doctor in five years. There are four other cities in the state of Michigan that have decriminalized psilocybin. And Senator Jeff Irwin has also introduced bill 499 to decriminalize psilocybin statewide. There are many benefits to the use of psilocybin, especially with the health crisis and mental health crisis that we are seeing nowadays. It could definitely help alleviate that and I think that it's something that you guys should consider. Like Nate said, the city of Lansing is the capital and if there are other states or other cities in the state of Michigan that are decriminalizing, I think that the city, or the capital city, should be leading the way and also decriminalize. Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, Michael Mercer.
Yeah, I'm hearing all this about all these homes here in the city of Lansing, like you did just before the, you know, speakers came down. All these homes are make, save, demolish, being red-tagged and all that. I'd like to talk about, what about all these here businesses that are years old that are no longer around, such as the Universal Market over there on Grand River at the time it was, now it's what, Caesar Yeshivas? It's a, I was, it was probably in the mid-'70s when I lived over in that area in Massachusetts when we used to go shopping over there. And it's been shut down for years. Same for that laundromat out there on the corner of Massachusetts and Grand River. I'm going to say Grand River because it was Grand River back when I lived there on Massachusetts and right across from Grand River Elementary School. Laundromat and a car wash, it's still standing there. It's not being used to my opinion for nothing. Same for that store. And it needs to be demolished. There are ISOs and another ISO would be when we moved from there on the south side of town. We used to go to that 7-Eleven there on the corner of Miller and Washington. It's been shut down since maybe the late '80s, not being used. There used to be Mark's Arcade in there, a laundromat. Why are they still standing? Not demolished. They're just standing there, not being used for nothing. They need to be demolished, like you're forcing all these people to demolish all their homes. And if you remember, councilmember Garza brought up, it was not the final meeting last year, but the meeting before the final, he brought up about the Metro One MLK to get demolished, to put it on the agenda to get it taken care of and demolished. It's still standing there. I don't understand why you guys not, you know, getting that demolished either. It's an ISO and you guys need to, you know, get off these homes for right now, get out these businesses that are years old. And on top of that, Carol, I'd like to say something to you. Kathy tells me she's been trying to contact you for so long, you just never do return phone calls. She does contact her councilmember, Jackson, and he does return phone calls. And you really are one of her councilmembers too, if you're in that large councilmember. So why can't you return phone calls to her when she would like to just speak to you? She might have something she'd like to talk about in politics in the city of Lansing. So why don't you give her a phone call? I'm sure you got it on your ID, her phone number now.
Thank you. Thank you. There was our last speaker.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned.